The East Cleveland Board of Education's special meeting and work session is now called to order. Stand for the pledge, and then we'll do the roll call. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Diana?
Yes?
I have a, on the, on the agenda, there is policy review by committee, but that wasn't on the notice.
May I have a roll call first, please?
That's what, and I'm waiting on it. I said after the, I said after the pledge, we would have our roll call.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
No problem, none was heard.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Miss Setmott Walls?
She's absent today.
Um, Mr. Robinson?
Present.
Ms. Fountain?
Present.
Ms. Sanders?
Present.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dr. Pedigree.
No, I was just saying, the notice didn't match the agenda.
The, the notice had two items?
The notice had two items, it was attendance policy and MGT plan.
Correct.
Uh, in the agenda, it talks about policy review by committee?
No, 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 all that is, that's a discussion just to re, just to remind the board of the grid that we sent.
Okay.
This should only be, uh, this is only for the attendance policy and the MGT plan.
Okay.
And the, the reason why you don't see MGT plan here is because it is not an action item, it's a discussion item. So the two items, based on the, um, agenda, I believe that you have one, and did she put one in front of each of you? For the special work session, it says MGT plan and attendance policy, those are the two items.
Correct.
Thank you.
So is it in here? Am I pulling up a?
I am, yes, it's, because that's just one, two, three.
Oh, we see January, the agenda.
It's in there, there's a special document. Did you log in?
That's not it. I was thinking I'm in, yeah.
You are.
Someone had put me in.
Uh, Ms. Whit, um, I'm looking at her, her access in board docs, the last meeting she has, January 13th, she doesn't have the meetings after that.
If she, did she log in, because it's, it's the same for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same thing for everyone.
But actually go out and log back in.
Go out and go back in.
Right.
You see the little black man?
That's why.
There you go. Go to East Cleveland schools. Yeah. You're not all the ones that's on the top. They follow the zone. No, it's all, it's all, um, hip and henses. You gotta do all that. Well, because those keep coming up. Do that. Come here. You gotta. You know. It's very good.
It's only supposed to say two, um, two things?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, you had it open. That's it.
Yeah, I had lost about a lot.
One of the, one of the challenges is, if you go into board docs directly, it's, it's not giving all the information. So you gotta go in through the school district, so that it takes you to the right place. That's what I just saw. I can come check.
She's in. That's it.
Yeah.
You got it.
Thank you.
But mine always takes a long time, as you know. But I always go through board docs, it's never been a problem previously. It just, it takes a while to look. I have something different going on. Everybody in? I'm still not. Okay, you said to go this time, they're going through, uh, East Cleveland schools, I'll try that and see if it'll load fast.
Tom, we need Sam to check this computer, why does it run slower than others?
Did you use Google Chrome or Microsoft Edge to go?
Uh, I think it was Chrome. Tom, you want to help with this computer?
Sure.
And, and check on this, so.
Something just popped up. It's there. Let's, let's go on to the next thing. Our next thing is?
Uh, it's either we're discussing the, the first is the attendance policy, and then the MGT plan. Those are the two items for tonight's discussion.
Okay. But, a lot of it, eat quick and easy then. As I proposed amendment to the attendance policy 3.17 discussion. Anyone have any discussions?
Well, we, um, tabled it for Ms. Fontaine, because, you know, we found, understand, because Paula, after you went to table it, Paula got up and talked about it. So we didn't, was it for sure if you were good with the policy being updated?
Yeah.
And, and committee talked about it as well, is that?
Yes.
So, if I may, uh, Ms. Sanders, as the chair of the, uh, welfare and public relations, we did bring policy 3.17 to the, uh, the welfare and public relations committee for discussion. They did look at the policy from 2016, and proposed policy, and then the, uh, the committee decided to bring that back to the board this evening, uh, for the vote, uh, because the, the committee was fine with the policy as written. Uh, we did send out an email to say if, that we were bringing this policy back for this meeting, and if anyone had any questions, to send those questions to Ms. Sanders, and, uh, uh, we could address it at this meeting. If not, uh, Ms. Sanders would, would bring that motion to approve this policy this evening.
Yes, I bring that motion to amend the policy.
Uh, secondly?
It's been properly moved to second that we, uh, um, a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, amendment to the attendance policy 3.17. Questions? No questions? Off with the vote.
I did open online voting to see if that would come up.
You may need to take, uh, Dr. Rice's verbally, we're still working with you.
Right, I'm waiting for the rest of them to come in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Thank you, all votes are in with a yes vote.
I got you.
Yes, Tom.
Thank you. Mr. Duzowski, thank you.
You're welcome.
All votes are in with a yes vote?
Motion passes. The second thing on our agenda is the MGT plan. Discussion.
Yes. So, I worked with most of the package. It was just really statistics and stuff like that, it wasn't nothing, we don't already pretty much know, just the changes for the school, what's the colors, what's all that, the, kind of like the per se options we have, that I think we need to discuss. Anybody have any discussion on it?
The only thing, I, I'm sure, I forwarded to each one of you the letter from the community pastors, concerned pastors, and, uh, uh, we definitely, uh, must be cognizant of the community, and, and, uh, information to the community, and we need to have a comprehensive plan as to what we're gonna do and how we're going to do, uh, before we make a decision about anything that flows.
So. So my thoughts are, we really need to have a discussion with the board on moving forward, best steps, because I saw a lot of other schools still deconstruction, and if we're closing schools, do we still put in all that money for construction? If we're closing, closing that particular school, does that even make sense? If we're gonna end up closing it and liquidating it, or whatever we vote on, needs to, we need to be clear on that. So it doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make sense to spend a lot of money on construction, if we're, if that's an option, that we have to close one of those schools.
And not only that, you know, one of the things, uh, that we need to make sure that taxpayers in this community, regardless as to how, what amount of taxes that they're paying, are heard, and whether, uh, we listen to their comments, at least to be heard, because I know, uh, me, as a taxpayer, I want to know as much information as possible, uh, about what is happening.
So a hundred and twelve people in this community participated in this project. Right? I mean, so really, here's my issue, as a superintendent, we are in deficit spending. Um, I want to also pass out, this came from Juanita Brent's office today. And you may have gotten that copy, but it talks about, we need to start lobbying, because we about to lose more money. About three million dollars.
Yep, you got it.
Uh, it's gonna keep going while other districts are increasing. So there, there's something going on there. And Diana and I, Diana was on a call today, Olazvols, some other groups, and they were going through this education plan. And in relation to what we're talking about, they are proposing that we close any building that has below 60% utilization. That's every building in East Cleveland. So we need to do something, and we need to be about that quickly. If y'all want to bring community back to the table, because remember, we, you were, you were in that meeting.
Oh, believe me.
And the pastors were in that meeting, somebody's, but they were in the meetings, where their voices were expressed, but the option of keeping all buildings open is not the option.
Oh, believe me, how well enough. But, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's a matter of individuals arguing or being concerned about the number that is passing, because we all know the, uh, attendance, or, or the, uh, nu- number that we have in our community. But even me, I sat in on those meetings, I had no idea that we were thinking about, uh, uh, closing these schools now. That moved on a little bit further than, uh, the amount, that, the information that we heard then. We were in the cafeteria, we heard, saw the presentation that, uh, MGT presented. Uh, I felt you could have done, did the same thing, that presented that same information. But nonetheless, uh, they got the information. Now they need to hear the solutions to that information. And I don't think that's a hard thing, nor do I think that's a thing that, uh, is, uh, uh, way down the road somewhere.
But Dr., but Dr., what's, Dr. Rice, you responded to one of the things and told them, we gonna be meeting here to talk about, and we in an empty room.
No, 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 no.
The board, the board meetings are public meetings. They need to come to these meetings, but what, what I don't, we can't sit and wait ad nauseam, because that's what we do, we don't make the decisions. I'm not, I gave you based on data, based on statistics, where we should go. If that's not where the board, there's five scenarios that we paid for, that they crafted out. Are we leaning toward one? Has everybody digested this information? Like, uh, to, to, Ms. Fontaine, to your point, the discussion. I, I would love to hear the board's discussion.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, right now, we should discuss it, but Vernon, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to be a part of the meeting, I guess I didn't get logged in, but I started listening to the whole meeting, the last four meetings. I guess I'm not understanding what the problem is. First of all, we don't have kids. So if we're opening, keeping buildings open, we're already in deficit spending. So now we gonna go completely out. I did receive the notice that she sent from the pastor group. My concern with them, where are they at?
I didn't invite them to this meeting, I told them that we were, the board was having a work session meeting.
But I mean.
And that's different, so I'll say.
Yep. All of them.
That's different than saying, come to this meeting, we're going to be discussing this primarily.
Okay, Doc, what is their concern about us closing the buildings? I'm not understanding what their concerns are when we don't have the kids. We don't have the power. They, when did we close Superior? And when did we close Caladonia? Do you remember, Dr. Pedigree?
Not Caladonia, uh, Chambers.
Not Caladonia, Chambers.
Was that in 20?
Okay. So now we're looking at, how many kids are in Superior?
130?
What does the capacity of that school hold?
Maybe nine, yeah.
So we're less than, uh, uh, eighth or tenth?
Those numbers are here, awesome, yeah, all the, all the buildings are under.
Understand.
Yeah.
So I read something, or I listened to a part where they said, um, is it Shaw, six to 12? Another?
That was one of the scenarios, yeah.
Alright, so you would have, actually, since I've been a resident since 64, all these kids that are here, you can house right in Shaw. Fifth floor is closed. So in actuality, you would have one high school, then it will house all the kids. But I think what I was reading, I didn't get a chance to read it all, because I just got this, but we have to do something quickly. We don't have the money to keep them open. So if we do keep them open, we gonna end up spending more money doing the repairs of the roof, the furnaces, water damages, we gonna keep spending more money. So I'm not understanding why we deadheaded or stuck in deciding this.
Is what it is. I don't think we're deadheaded or stuck, I just think we haven't had a discussion amongst ourselves about it, because this is our first time even interacting, speaking on it amongst us.
I guess because I was watching, the meeting didn't cut off, I mean, I thought it got further, and that's, I'm sorry.
And can I add, can I add one more point to that point? Last year, we did not have a full board, we went through a whole lot. We now have a full board, so now we, we need to deal with this. Before, it was only three team board, you know, that kind of thing, it wasn't, but now you have a full board, and this is that, we can keep giving more data, we can, but the, the board has, what is the board's pleasure? Ideally, we would like to bring a resolution in March, um, for a vote. Because realizing all of this stuff, at this point, we're not talking about next year, we're talking about the year after that, because it's gonna take a year of getting everything ready to do most of this stuff.
So, so do we all agree that moving forward with all these repairs does not make sense?
It doesn't.
Okay. So at least we got that.
But which repairs?
Whatever schools that, I all need them.
They all do it. So let me, let me, let me clarify, let me clarify.
Hold on, hold on, don't cut me off. What I'm saying is, whatever schools that we choose that have to be eliminated, those should not get repaired.
That's already in the, that was already in the case.
Okay, so, after that, we gotta figure out which ones they're gonna be. So we need to discuss that.
So it's not happening, 26th is happening, 26th, 27th?
It can't happen. We don't have enough time to pull this off by August. Because the longer we wait to make the decision, the more we're gonna push this out.
Right.
Right? This, this thing happened, we did this back over the summer, this was, August was the last iteration of this, I want to say June was, they did this in, in May, this was last year. But then we, we needed to, we need to have a conversation with the full board, and we need to be able to discuss these things. And the board was dealing with a whole lot of other stuff too. But now this is on the board's plate. And especially when Diana heard that 60% utilization is the number now, and they're gonna start talking about, you gotta give up buildings if you're not at 60%. And they taken away, it used to be two years before you had to offer it up, now they're proposing to cut it to one year, and it's not only, they're saying the charter schools inside the district, that's Apex Academy, would be first dibs to get it. Now they're saying this, uh, charter schools outside of the district can come in. So it, this is a really big issue, but it's not going away. And it's, and, and according to this research, is every year is gonna get worse. By 33, we'll be down to 18%. Alright? And what that tells others looking, is that we don't, we're hesitant to make decisions. Um, one, one person at the 112 people when they were there, um, said that we need to, the district needs to turn that hardcore, and the district is refusing, this is back when the community was there, the district doesn't want to make those tough decisions. I'm not saying this board is feeling that way, but at the time, that was one of the residents' decisions. I do believe this is, this is the board conversation. You have five scenarios sitting in front of you in this document. Um, and then I gave you a summary of those in, in the first two pages, trying to help out, but this, what is the opinion of the board? Remember?
Number five?
Yes, I agree.
Oh, if number five is a miracle, where are we moving this to?
Second page. It's like the best option.
That's what I'm asking.
The only problem I have with that is moving the board to Chambers.
Doing what now?
Moving the board to Chambers.
So, so now this is a group, are there alternative locations for the board? Because this would turn, this would go back into the school. And we struggled, where do you put, where do you put your board?
Is there room at Caladonia?
Well, there's room at all, up in actuality.
Not, not, no, not if you do these new scenarios. There's no, there's no more room at Caladonia, we about to fill it with most of these scenarios, or close.
Why do you have a problem with Chambers?
The conditions, the conditions, and it's gonna cost some money to get it up.
So the board would move to Chambers?
That's, that's in the proposal.
A possible scenario, yes.
What scenario is that in?
I think that's five.
I think five.
Okay. Moving the board to, I'll come and go back and look, because I just received this. Going to Chambers. What's the problem?
Conditions.
Of Chambers?
The street conditions, the security, everything. Yeah, remember, I'm from East Cleveland too, I know that area very well, it's very, very dangerous.
Where? Now you're, I'm in the heart of.
Excuse me?
I'm in the heart of. I'm on Shaw.
You know the name.
There's nothing there.
Okay.
Trust me.
So, so eliminate the two dead bodies that was found on Strathford?
Somebody put them there. Remember that?
Still.
So that's not.
Safety is an issue for me.
I think Chambers is one of the most secure.
Any alternative location?
Because you got fire stations sitting here.
There we. Can we move to Shaw?
Um.
You said the fifth floor will square?
It wouldn't be under this scenario.
Once they do that.
It's tough.
But now, if we do move to Superior, he's not here. You got Whaley still over security, so that area would be more secure.
He said Superior?
I mean to Chambers, I keep saying Superior. If we move to Chambers, you've got more security coming down there. Right now, only problem you have in that area, there's really no houses. So you don't have danger there. Danger is on the outskirts of it. Uh, I think Chambers is more secure than any. Because I'm there, I guess because I'm there. It used to be a problem at one time, you had Elwood and Hampton. All them gangs are gone. Them houses been either burnt down or tore up. There's nothing on Elm to the back of that stadium. There's nothing down 143rd.
I own a rental property up there, so it's different for me.
Okay. So you got 143rd, you got 142nd. Well, I guess because I'm at Chambers, the majority of time when I'm up here at Shaw. I think that's an ideal place. Well, we have football games there, we don't have any problems. We had one incident from graduation, where they were coming from Cleveland, chasing a guy.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna be the holdup.
I understand.
For, for that, because just after we move the board off.
I think number five, when I was reading, I was only skimming through, I think number five is a better scenario to me.
Why?
Just reading it, and then the area.
The money, the 5.6?
Yes.
The lowest. Oh, what's yours?
Uh, in the same reason, the reason of money.
Dr. Rice?
Hello? Uh, basically, when I look, when I first looked at it, and I, I think I had a chance to see it a while ago, uh, you know, number five was the very best to me. Uh, I still am concerned though, about community people not really knowing and understanding what is happening. That's my, that's, that's my whole thing in a nutshell.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Alright, how can we, how can we resolve? I know we gotta, we gotta get in front of the community.
Definitely.
Um, does the board have ways that we can do that? We can create opportunities to do that.
Besides asking them to come to the board meeting?
Then I come. We did the community reach out, when we did the connecting with the community, they only came for the food when the presentation, presentation started, they got up and left.
That was that, but not the ones where, where, where I attended as well. Uh, uh, people, you know, people are the same, I don't care where you go, I don't care the amount of money that they have or don't have. People are the same. I think that primarily, we have, we need to do a better job of informing the community, these are the options, and this is what has been selected. I don't have a problem with, uh, closing schools, because I think it's absolutely ridiculous, uh, the number of, of, uh, students that are in these school buildings. And that, of all the calls that I get of educators, that's the, that's the bad first thing they say. Mary, there's nobody in East Cleveland in those schools. I say, yep, you, you know, you practically right about that. I went over with my agency, and we were doing so and so. I was shocked when I looked, I say, yep, that's the nature of the beast that we serve. The attendance in East Cleveland, if students are just leaving, that the, uh, residents are leaving. Maybe, do what now?
Convert it into housing?
Uh, uh, that's generally what happens, like, in Cleveland Municipal School District, every time they close the school building, about 99% of the time, it turned into an apartment building or something like that. But, uh, I, I would be satisfied, um, having, share, to share with the community, I just would. I, and I, uh, you know, it, anytime you running towards, this, this has got to be this, I'm, I always gonna put in the bricks, because I want to see the fine points myself. And I haven't digested that as well as I would like to, because I do have some other things to do other than board business. Uh, I'd like to digest it a little bit more. I think that we need to find a date, and whether people coming out. But it's. But it's.
And we'll have an opportunity.
To, and, and, and they're not gonna change, I'm, I, I, I'm still gonna be five. Regardless, no one would change my mind, but it's just the thing that, you know, who are we to say, well, it's gonna be this way, and I don't care what you say. Uh, just because you had a hundred people there, you know, the greatest majority of the people do not know what's coming down the pipe. And they have no idea how, how the, uh, few students are in these Cleveland schools now. They just don't.
May, may I suggest? Can we invite them to the next board meeting?
Sure.
And then?
Let's make it a big thing.
Make it a big thing. Ahead of that, I've already done this for, cause parents have already been asked. And we've been generating some FAQs for parents, some, some information, so we could do that for every building that's even considered in here, and get that out to, to the book bags, get that out to the parents, and then pointing them to come to this March meeting. We can do it in the auditorium.
I think that's a great idea. Can we do it an hour earlier? That hour is the community meeting, and after that is the board.
So like do a five community, six board? Cause I don't wanna do it too early for the community, for something like that. Like a five for the community, like the regular start of our board meeting. You open it for the community, and you can do a presentation. And Tom, we'll even see if, see if, uh, Lance wants to come out for that, um, so we can talk about.
Who's Lance?
Uh, the facilitator that came out, that, that.
MDT, the white guy?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry to call it that, I'm like that, but I don't mean that, but that's, that's the way I could dispute, cause he was the only one there.
He was the only one there, right.
You know what I mean?
So, but, but definitely do something to where that hour is, hey, everybody that's looking for any conversation about this, because the board has a responsibility to be in a forum board and then make decisions. Um, and all, and today, we just need consensus, that's the direction of the board.
And, uh, when I, I was down at Columbus, when they did it, they, you know, they just, they had illustrations of, you know, uh, uh, big information cards, uh, uh, scenario one, scenario two, scenario three. That way people can come in and look, and, and what have you. And we need to really, really saturate the community with interest. It doesn't matter what they say. What, what matters is they have an opportunity to say.
Well said. That is well said.
Is this going on in Avon as well? Did you see that on the news? Avon, something's going on in Avon where they have, uh, they're going through something with low and roll number children.
Any sign what's happening?
You seen that?
Yes.
Yeah, and they, there are the news, they're, they're, they're trying to bring in people in.
People are moving further and further out and not having as many children.
That way.
Question, does that board meet March ten?
Yes. The next one?
Yeah.
It is? Alright, I'm not flying, I'm here.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes, that's perfect.
So we can gear up to that as a, and we'll do it over there at the media, or the auditorium, the Shaw. Um, and we can have some big posters up of the five scenarios, we can put that up on little boards so people can walk around and see. We can do all of that, um, do a presentation.
There you go, there you go.
Do a sign in sheet, all of that. And then afterward, then the board will start their meeting, and you go through your reservations.
And those, you know, for those who are active in community groups, get a, get ahead of the game. Talk to them and let them know. A lot of people have no idea. They still back there in the sixties when, when these schools were bursting at the seams. They just don't know, and we need to make sure that we share. And I know between now and March tenth, there are about four community meetings I'm going to, so I will share with all four of them.
I, I would also encourage the board to look at all of the, all the community, the community meetings. Cause there, there's a lot of them that happen in this community.
Yes.
And divide them up or some kind of way. How do we make sure we can get to all of them? I know Dr. Rice, you gonna go to those. How do we get to those other ones too?
Yes.
Even when I first got here, I had to go run around to, you meet with two or three people, but those two or three people, that conversation was a bigger conversation than a hundred people.
You got it.
How do we get to those little pockets of people? Millionaire's Row, um, up the hill in, in Forest Hills area. How do we, how do we get someone to make sure, is there, is there a calendar of those events? Is there a way we can see when all the, where, is there a common place to see that?
Not really, but, you know, I can, uh, um.
I'll contact Gladys Walker, cause she's constantly over in my area, so I'll contact her to see what's going on.
She's in the gardening area?
Yeah, she's always on my street, so I always see Gladys.
Tom, website, let's do something with the website, put five scenarios on a, on a separate page, and then we can reference that when we send out communications. This is good.
Okay. I feel a lot better about it now, because I don't want anything shoved down my throat. I wanna, you know, have an opportunity to say, okay.
And my purpose of giving you this was to initiate this.
Thank you, Dr. Pedigree. We do appreciate that. Okay? And, uh, the phone call that I got, I am sure, you know, Oneida Brent is, she's,
She's a supporter.
She's an advocate of East Cleveland, and, and she really tries hard. Uh, uh, we need to, uh, usually, uh, anyway, I'll be doing some written testimony for Wednesday. Uh, uh, and if anybody, uh, is interested in being a part of that, at least call your, uh, uh, representatives, both on the, uh, 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 House and State. Uh, and if anybody needs those telephone numbers, I'd be happy to give them to, because it's, it's better if we all do it.
Let me see. Yeah.
Pardon me?
Phone number's on there.
Oh, okay, good, I hadn't seen it.
Um, Diane and I, on Friday, we were on a call with over nine hundred educators in the state talking about this very same. And one of the, what other districts are doing is they're having their, their parents and their community members write letters. But the folks that are receiving these letters, listen to how they want them. They don't want them cookie cutter or just, you know, you, you make like a template and everybody use the template. They want every single letter to have individualized stories about how this district helped you personally. It's really against districts like ours, because it's hard to pull, they say half of your, your, your student count. Even on this Oneida Brent page, if you look at East Cleveland, they have us at a thousand ninety-eight, so we need five hundred letters to be written and submitted before Wednesday. That's what other communities are doing, cause this is not just us. I was on the call with Chardon, these rural districts, they're getting hit also. And I also wanna say with this, look at the districts that are getting more money over two years. And look at who's losing money. We're losing the same amount of money as Cleveland Municipal.
And, and, and you and I both know what they're trying to do, East Cleveland. They're trying to close it. Quick, uh, quick. They truly are.
So, let me say that part. I was on the call with, uh, uh, Tyler County Councilman today. And the conversation was, in Columbus, they're trying to just, that, does that divide it up? Uh, up the hill and the parks go to Cleveland. Everything else becomes the latest war of Cleveland.
That's right.
And, and now they've introduced a new term. I heard a circle feast. Now there's a, a Euclid circle.
Yeah.
There's a Euclid circle, there's a Duke. They, they want a feast too? So, all of this is saying, we, there's a lot going on, and a lot of people are making decisions about this city that aren't connected to us.
They tried that, I don't know how many years ago, where they was gonna divide East Cleveland. I think was, this part goes to Cleveland, starting tiers.
Took some, took their part already, and stopped because they got into a with the mayor at the time. So that came to a halt, and Cleveland backed out because the council had all these stipulations.
Right.
And they said, forget it, we're not doing all of that. So that's why that voted on that side. But Cleveland High said, take their entire portion that they were supposed to get. They stopped once that happened, cause it was a two-way deal.
Right.
So.
And it's going to, uh, they're trying, definitely trying to resurrect it.
Yep.
But there's a, there's another house bill, like nineteen or something, that I saw, uh, uh, that is really, uh, trying to cut more additional funding. Uh, you know, just everything that's coming down the pipe. Remember who's in charge, guys? And, uh, that's what you have, have to look at, look at. Okay, um, what are we, how, how are we gonna address? That's almost impossible, but, because just for me, to give testimony, I'm gonna have to be writing for the next, to, tonight and tomorrow to try to come up with something coherent to say for, to turn in for testimony for Wednesday. Cause I think it has to be turned in Tuesday.
Twenty-four hours before.
Uh-huh, if it's, yeah. So therefore, let's see if I can get something down. And, uh, uh, since, uh, since we've been here, I've gotten the call, uh, call from Youngstown and Lorraine, so I know they're probably same, same. And we'll probably, uh, uh, um, share in our testimony. But wow. And in essence, they are definitely, every time I hear anything, um, there are charter schools who definitely wanna move in, and as you know, for like ten years, I sat on the state charter school of board, and I just got off last year, cause it just got to be too much. And, uh, talking to Ms. Valentine, who was here, she said, Mayor, they, they really wanna come into East Cleveland. So, and, and here we go. And I'm not a part of the meetings anymore, so I don't know what the heck they're discussing.
So they won't just take it?
Yes. And no, but, but the argument is.
The school building, even though they need repair, they're really not that bad charter school.
There, there were some. They have evaluation, absolutely.
Yes.
Because we had to sell it to them, right?
I, what, uh, uh, one year now, right?
If, if this, if this, if this goes through, if you close a building within one year, we have to make it available for them first. They get first dibs on it. If they want it, they can have it. If not, then we can try to do something else, but.
Are they paying for it? Well, they're public schools, so yeah, but yeah.
Value.
Market value, which is not gonna get you.
Get you very much.
I don't know what you're getting commercially.
But there, there, there are two layers to that. It's, the first layer is the in-district. Charter schools have first dibs. Second layer is out of district.
Yes.
Charter schools can also bid for it if the in-district does not.
So you're talking about the constellations, the breakthroughs, the, the ones that have schools in every community?
And the one who wants to bring an athletic program, that school here for athletics. That's. Okay. And you heard that real popular administrator for, uh, Horizon passed, but that, that's the guy who really made, uh, Horizon's school, very popular. And this is, he just passed above. Yeah, man. Okay. Any other discussions on it? So we, we know what we're going to do, and we're all set. Anyone have any other discussions on that? Anyone?
No.
If, I'm saying to, and I paid my center for it. So I didn't have to run. Okay, uh, that, I think exhausts our, our agenda for, um, MDT plan. And I will say, as we prepare for that meeting coming up, I, I will be meeting with Dr. Pedigree, our normal meeting that we have. That meeting has been set up already. Uh, Trish set it, and if anyone has any questions or something, they want to, want me to, uh, discuss with Dr. Pedigree, if you will please, I see. I'm trying to see where. Yeah.
Dr., Dr. Rice?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, uh, the Welfare and Public Relations Committee sent out a grid, that's what that other note is, policy review by committee, that's on the agenda. The Welfare and Public Relations did send out a grid, uh, with, uh, twelve different policies, and indicating the committee that needs to review that policy. Uh, if those committees would please review those policies, and then, um, bring them back before, report for discussion at the work session in March.
At the March, at the March work.
Yes, of the thought for this, the thought for the grid was that each committee knows exactly what, uh, policy that they had to review. They review that in committee, and then bring it back to the March work session for discussion with full board, and then so that those policies could be approved at the April, uh, board meeting.
Okay.
I didn't receive it.
If, if. Would you please send them to Ms. Fountain, please?
That document you're talking about, the grid?
The grid was, the grid was accompanied all of those policies that we, that I sent. One of those attachments was the grid. So if we read that, if we read the email that I sent to all of the board members, you'll see that one of the attachments is the grid that accompanied that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't see it, please advise me. Send, just, just an email, and I'll send it back to you.
Send it. Would you please send that email back to, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Fountain? Why don't you just send it to the whole board, be done with it? Just resend it.
Okay.
As a matter of that much time, right?
I will, I will resend it.
Thank you.
This, this doesn't say, this is just a letter.
Okay.
I will resend it.
I, I saw the.
I sent it on last Tuesday. After the board meeting, I think that night, I sent that on behalf of the Welfare and Public Relations Committee last Tuesday night.
After your, uh, uh, welfare and, uh, uh, committee meeting? Yeah, I think I saw it yet. I saw it yesterday. I haven't had a chance to digest it.
It's just a letter. It's not, uh, grid.
She's gonna send it, resend it, so. Makes, and I, I, uh, and please let me know whether you get it or not. I would appreciate it. Anything else?
Yeah, are we gonna discuss our, the finance committee?
Well, no, that's at the regular board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Those items that we discussed in committee, uh, Ms. Fountain?
Okay, that's for a regular board meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's for a regular board.
Okay, and, and Ms. Whit, I, I, I'm gonna call you in about half an hour. I'd, I'd like to share some thoughts with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Just wanna, you know, uh, be a heads up, just in case you had something else to do, we could, uh, you know, uh.
That's fine, just give me a call.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else, anything else good for the order? Dr. Pedigree, anything you wanna share with us in addition?
No, I just wanna thank the board for a productive work session, um, and the direction that the board is going, I appreciate it, so. I have nothing to, or additional.
Okay. Thank you, one and all, and you know, when I, one of the things I always like for the board members to do is to have an opportunity to have a comment. Even though we don't have anyone in here, uh, to hear our comment, uh, uh, I, I usually ask, I begin with, to my right, uh, Mr. Robinson, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, um, Ms. Fountain, any comments?
Nope, not right now.
Mrs. Sanders, any comments?
No.
And me. Thank you for coming. That's my only comment that I have, and I think this is one, this is a great board. I am just, I am just elated with what's happening here, so just thank you, thank you, thank you, and that's all I have for the night, this is the day, so.
Man, we have, man, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry, we're saying this way, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a motion to adjourn.
That's what I was asking for, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
The motion has been made, and properly seconded, uh, uh, that we adjourn the meeting. Are there any additional comments? Or concerns? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Online voting should be open?
Oh, shoot. Uh, uh, I, I closed my.
Okay, Mr. Robinson?
I got it.
Mr. Robinson?
I just sent it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanders, Ms. Fountain.
Yes.
And Dr. Rice?
Yes.
All votes are in with yay.
Okay, have a great evening, one and all. The meeting is now adjourned. This says update and shut down estimated four minutes. You guys gonna be here?